All right, we'll get started. It's seven o'clock for Monday, August ninth of 2021. This is the Town of Brookfield Planning Board. We'll do roll call. I'm Tim Straz, Ed Camone here, Terry Ward.
Yeah.
John Mayer.
Here.
Gus Strad, Rick Saret. We have an alternate and a poll of comments. None. Moving on. Correspondence, we have none. Review and post approval of minutes from July 12th. Has everybody had their opportunity to read and review?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 12th, 2021 as presented.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing the discussion, all those in favor approving the minutes from July 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Accepted. Moving on to personal wireless service facility. I was in contact with Mitchell Group with our decision from last month for them to move ahead with writing the ordinance. And they got back to me and said that they would have it done by the end of this month. So nothing to report right now. And seeing nothing else there, move on to conditional use permits, which last month we talked briefly about this Town of Tamworth event permit policy and instructions. And there are several RSAs that are fairly important, I think, being referenced that we need to keep in mind. And anybody get a chance to review or any thoughts?
I just noticed that the top part of it refers a lot to town property. And that won't be our situation, right?
This is correct. Yeah, this is for primarily, it's written for their town properties, roadways. Yes, but it does talk about other occurrences.
We do have town property. Maybe we could just on our version of that, we could just reverse it and emphasize the property stuff first, the real estate second.
Yep. So I think part of tonight's discussion is we need to come up with a plan of what we want to do, or at least outline a plan of how we want to sort out this as a replacement for our REC one conditional use permanent process. Go for it. Okay.
I do like the way that they refer to having an option to make changes in the application should the need arise, to reevaluate when an application has been made.
Yep.
To possibly, you know, make changes or to or require, have separate, different requirements because of the type of situation. And that kind of gives you an option there, right? I like the way they did it, it seemed.
It refers to the process going through the selectmen.
Yep.
Police chief, I see. So that would take this away from the plan, but.
Yep. Yes. So I guess the big question is, you know, if we should outline something here. Right? Of what we want to do. So our, we'll just for now call it our event policy. And so we're talking about the locations would be REC one. Right?
Yeah.
It would be town property.
And then would you list off like the things that require conditional use permit underneath that or?
Well, I think we're looking to, we're going to, well, let's, let's start here, locations, we'll get there.
We got a blue personal problem?
We have nothing on personal property right now.
Right.
I personally don't think it's necessary to write that at this point.
I could, I would think that this would be something that is phased year to year, like we, we take care of the main issue, which is the REC one. We tag on the town property just because it makes sense.
And we have events on town property.
Right. And then from there, following years, we can look at any other.
Focus on REC one, then you say the town property, that's it.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, Ed.
Sorry. What I would do first is first I would try to figure out or establish what is the capacity of REC one.
Yep.
And then I think we should divide it into groups of participants. And then bring over the common elements that they have here in each application. But we should establish what that is, like so, and then we can add to each, each established participant amount. We could add to it all the requirements for that specific amount. That way, when the guy comes in, he says before, when somebody comes in to do the application and they know they're only having 100 people, then they take the 100 people, one, and it's for them. Like anything up to 100, they have to follow this procedure. 200, this procedure, or 50. And.
So let me hold you right there. So I think we need to talk about the difference between indoor and outdoor. Right? Because you mentioned occupancy, so we don't know what that would be for REC one, do we? I don't think, I don't think it's ever been established.
Right. And that's always been, I think, the, the concern is that, you know, what happens if you have, you know, 3,000 people and are we able to handle that? So if we don't know what that limit is, we should establish that.
Right. So.
Or just set it. There is an indoor facility there, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And that has an occupancy and that has a fire limit.
I, I, I can't answer what that would be or who would establish that.
But that could be one of the applications. One could be for the indoor, like you said.
Well.
And then the outdoor.
I would think that, I think that we would have to establish what the occupancy of that, of not only the REC one property, but the town property indoor facilities would be. I think that needs to be established, but I think that for the, for this policy to be enacted, that that would have to be one of the things that would have to be executed on before a permit or could be issued.
Well, I mean, when was the restaurant last opened? It was like six, seven years ago. And I would assume that Wakefield Fire had to approve the facility or had to establish some sort of.
Right, sure. I, I agree that, but I don't think it's up to this board or the selectmen to establish what the occupancy is. It's up to the owner to, to have that evaluated and provide that information. So I guess the question is, we have to make a testament, right?
Are you speaking to the indoor or speaking to the?
Indoor, right, indoor for right now.
Well, if you're only speaking indoor, an indoor facility that has cooking and has events on it, it's already established by, by the fire code, how many people you can have in the building. And the same thing is for this building. So that's already established.
Yes.
What do you mean?
Yes, I would say yes.
Now, I don't know what that is. I don't know if you can have 60 in there or 600. I don't remember what it was. And that way, if he exceeds that, you don't know which application he needs to use.
Okay, so I guess that's a homework assignment then, right? So if we, is that something that the Wakefield Fire would have established occupancy for these buildings? For this building, for the town hall? And for REC one, do we think?
They should, I believe. Doesn't the townhouse have, or maybe I'm thinking of somebody else's townhouse.
I'm going to a lot of them, so.
It actually says capacity limit. At the delegation meeting, the delegation room up at the county, there's 60 occupants in there. And it says by fire marshal, so it's got to be in there somewhere.
Okay.
But that should be easy to find.
Okay, so REC one, the office building and the town hall are indoor locations. So the question, so you could say that if we're going to tier occupancy, you could say that for this permit, this would happen based off of full occupancy of the, of the structure, right? So per se, let's say that someone wants to, you know, have a, a market in the town hall. What would the process be?
Town properties are exempt from us.
We're going to focus on. I'm just using as an example.
It's in the Tamworth.
What's that?
The Tamworth regulation.
Yep.
It says the town properties are exempt.
From permit? Okay.
From permit application.
Okay.
But we could establish on there the, right in the capacities of our buildings.
So I'm just trying to, trying to start writing, write something here. To say that if you go to REC one and you have, you want to have an event indoor than at REC one, if you, as long as you stay within the occup, the established fire occupancy, you can have a permit and the permit process is you fill out this application, you bring it to the selectmen and they, you pay a fee and you're done.
We, we probably wouldn't have to put the network people that the fire marshal will have something, because that's, that's up to them. They have that kind of facility. Also bear in mind that there is no indoor conditional use. All the conditional stuff is outdoor activity. So inside is pretty much anything.
So you can put 200 people in, in the building?
The fire code already said you can.
Right.
By, by bathrooms, I would say that.
But I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, we don't have any, you, you, why don't you go back on it? If they put 200 people in the building and catches on fire, you go, oh, you didn't, we don't have, there's nothing in any of this saying, you know, we, we were looking out for the, the people that participated, right?
I, I think we're going too deep. I think we have to. They have a responsibility of adhering to their own stated capacity that the fire marshal put on them as a public place and a restaurant, a bar or whatever else they have up there.
Well, could you just make a blank, one sentence statement saying that should the activity take place indoors, that it meets all local building codes as far as occupancy, period, boom, done deal. And that kind of covers it, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that the question, or?
Yeah, no, I think that, well, it was good you said that. Now, if, who, who actually does the inspections? Does the fire marshal ever come out and check if you're, if he hasn't, if they have an event up in the building? Do they go and inspect that?
I don't know.
Do they have to notify anybody? I don't know.
I would think if somebody called and complained, he'd have to go investigate. If it was a question of being overcrowded. But I don't think they'd go up voluntarily just to go look and see if they're exceeding their limits.
I, I brought that up because I'm thinking it since the, the state already controls the area because it's the restaurant or it's a fire thing and they have to have it looked at regularly anyway, that should, may not be something we have to worry about. If somebody's already, if it already falls under the criteria of another statute, I don't know if we have to.
So I'm going to throw out RSA 15518, which is the public safety and welfare of factories, tenants, schoolhouses, places of public accommodation, resort or assembly. And it states a license is required. No person shall own or operate the place of assembly within the state unless licensed to do, so to do by the licensing agency of the city, town or village district where said place assembly is located, including assemblies occurring on state waters or ice form on state waters. According to the regulations herein, probably located. In the application of this act to existing places of assembly, the licensing agency may modify such of its provisions as we require structural changes if in his or her opinion, added safety may be, may be obtained otherwise by the current record was kept, such modifications and the reasons therefore. So it sounds like as a town, we have a responsibility by the state to make sure that if there's a place of assembly, that it's safe. We have a legal responsibility.
So will state the fire RSA, just like they did the other one?
If it's a restaurant, doesn't he have to get it inspected anyway? And isn't there, doesn't he already take out something? Because he's, he has a, it's a business where people are going to be indoors. I thought there's already a, I know it says town or city, but I thought that would happen.
I don't know. Is that the note that they've come for, looking for a permit to have a restaurant or?
Well, maybe if he has a kitchen, then he's got to have, you know, a regular.
At the beginning of the first hour, I think he was, did all that through the state.
Yeah.
Not that he came through there.
Like Lena, if Lena, if he has a restaurant, he's got a plaque saying that he passed his health.
Yep.
Requirements and stuff.
Moose Mountain is a restaurant right now.
Well, I only know, I was only in that building once, so I thought it was a kind of a restaurant type thing.
It may have been when you were in there.
Do they still have a liquor license?
No, not public photo.
That might be the last time they were inspected when they got their liquor license.
All right, let me take a couple notes. Indoor events limited to maximum occupancy.
Did you say established occupancy levels? Is that what you were just saying?
I didn't. Oh, I had established.
I think we get any couple places in town that want to exceed their occupancy. And the way the fire, fire marshal addressed that was you pay to have a fire person there during the event to make sure things were, were done safely. That gave the people the relief that they hit it all over the.
Might want to, might want to consider that. You need 10 more people?
Get a fire person in.
I think they paid, yeah, they have to pay.
Yeah.
But they make sure you're not doing anything stupid to prevent it happen. Okay. So about outdoor events?
So should we start with an example to kind of go down the list, I guess? Like you, that mission more, like a market. Let's say it's a small 100 person.
Like anything less than 100.
Yeah.
We almost went through this exercise the last time. And we had never done a permit for them. They wanted about 3,000 people. And we had no data on whether that would work or not. The event was going to be updated. Is there, was a fire marshal or some safety agency certified outdoor event there? For a number of people, maybe there's a number on that facility.
Just comment on your first paragraph.
Yes.
I'm thinking about what you're saying. If it's indoors, you can do anything you want. Is that, is that what you're saying? Is that what the board's saying?
I say yes, up to your capacity.
Anything you want, let your mind wander.
Well, no, no, we're not saying anything you want. It's, it's the permitted uses of, most of them are indoor.
Well, then, okay, that would be fine. He said permitted uses, but if anything can go.
No, we don't want to say anything can go.
I agree with that. The comment was the.
Who's did you?
No, but, no, we didn't.
Permit uses.
Right.
Permit uses.
We didn't say.
Probably outdoor uses.
You didn't, we didn't say, but yours said it?
We did not. You are correct to correct us. Yes, sir. No, scratching the head. So are we going to define a list of permitted uses? Are we going to take our conditional use, current conditional use ordinance and then extract from that what we consider permitted indoor uses? I'm just thinking next steps.
Well, you don't, you don't mean pick and choose. You just mean it just has to be listed if these are the permit. It has to go by the ordinance, right, that exists. You're not saying pick or choose, right?
Well, no, I, I, I was thinking we were replacing the current ordinance with a new one, so.
I was thinking we're replacing the conditional use permit.
Yes. They're tied together.
Okay. There's no permit necessary for permitted uses.
Right.
So we should revisit that, make sure that none of them are.
Yeah, we'll get there. Yeah, I think we need to figure out like, like this is good because we're doing a breakdown of the different categories, right? Right, right. So I think we're, you know, for outdoor, we're up to 100 people. And then what do we do? 100 to 500 people, then 500 plus? I don't know, we're just throwing numbers up there.
Well, less than 100, then 100 to 500 and then.
Yeah, I think if we get the first one done, then the other one should be pretty easy. We said all, all the things that are going to change would be how much, how much fire access, parking would change, toiletries would change. What else would change depending on capacity or population or participants? Like what else would change? Noise?
Well, yeah, we discussed noise, hours of operation.
Yep.
Well, I didn't see anywhere in our this event application from the other town that even lists numbers of people at all.
Right.
Yeah, that's because it's a policy. It's not.
Right, it's not the, the actual application.
Since they have no ordinances at all, they have come up with some way of, you know, not necessarily restricting, but just, just regulating the safety aspects of events. Because people were doing, doing it right in the middle of the road.
That's exactly what they said, just regulating the roads and the facilities, public and private for public safety. Underwear and tear on the roads, et cetera. Also the public plans that we're talking about. So they're just, just covering it.
See, I would think that, I don't think anybody should be using the right way up at the REC one area as a parking lot.
Right.
I mean, that's, that would be an emergency vehicle situation. So that can be worked into, you know, the requirement, once everybody agrees.
Do we want to continue discussing this anymore? Because I, I would say we can, I can take a stab at a draft for next month and.
We'll go out, let's do some homework. Let's get a homework assignment.
You want a homework assignment?
Well, just so we have one person working on one, one thing. So if somebody focuses on, focuses on the 100 and then go to the 500 and then just come up with a basic. You know, everybody just pick some and come up with a basic permit.
Let me take, let me take a stab at writing it.
Okay.
Does somebody want to speak to the Wakefield Fire Department and see if there's anything regarding occupancy in the Town of Brookfield that they're concerned about? Indoor or outdoor for events in REC one?
They want me to do that?
Anybody, whoever wants it for homework.
I'll take the homework assignment.
All right.
You're going to ask them to inspect the buildings, to get the occupancy? What are you going to ask?
We're going to ask them all those questions.
Yeah.
Get this room too.
That's what I was going to say before. I know that you rent out, do you rent, do you, you have a.
We use it.
You have an application process for this, but you don't have anything for here.
We don't even know what the occupancy is.
I guess I'll.
No, well, for the COVID thing, we came up on occupancy like 11. That was it, by, by their rules.
Yes. I have no idea. Any public building has to have a cap, don't they, on occupancy? I just know what it is. I, I have no idea.
It should be posted.
Yeah, you would think it would be posted somewhere. So.
That's a good question.
I like the answer.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly, you're right. Nobody asked you.
Well, commercial buildings. Probably have to post it afterward, after you know that.
You should. One, two, three locations, right? If he gets that, one, two.
Right.
Right.
The barn? The barn?
Barn?
What, what were those?
Now, you just said fire. Do you want me to do police too?
Uh, no, I think the, I think the fire would be the most important because that, that kind of dictates a lot.
That's what's going to go into the, the permit.
Right.
Would you look for something else? I'd suggest fire marshal capacity on outdoor events.
Well, it's what I'm saying. We don't have a known, we can't look at, you know, that, as you want.
They might, they might look at a plot plan of state car parking, et cetera, everything. So somebody.
So I'll ask, how did they come up with that number?
For outdoor.
Because maybe there's a formula or something. I mean, they use the ball fields, so they must do something. And they have that up there.
Right. Was that for this one?
You got to get it to insurance and security as well.
I figure we'll get there eventually. We'll get something on paper that we can edit and expand on.
I don't sense that. Because there are also good ideas in this, I mean.
Yes, absolutely. It's very good. Yeah. Master plan, nothing to report right now. I'll endeavor to have something for next meeting. Member comments? Eric, you're up first.
I have a call.
All right. Terry?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Tom?
I'm good.
Ed, do you always have comments?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to do. We have an inspection coming up, I believe, that we have to do the gravel pits.
Yes, I have that written down right here. I'm glad you brought it up.
Very good. So we're going to do the gravel pit inspection. On our list, what else has to be done that we know, we have, we have minutes to do?
Minutes are done then. That's what I just finished it off there now.
I'll be correct.
Last gravel inspection, I don't recall. Did we bring a trainee with us?
No, you didn't bring me. No, you didn't bring me. You said you were gonna. I was just gonna bring that up. Can you let me know when you go? And if I can fit it into my work schedule, I'll come with you guys.
How many people fit that truck?
About eight. I think, I think they are.
They're all big.
Six, we'll do six.
Do we allow dumping in a permit, in, in a pit?
Dumping?
Yeah. I mean, we, you're talking about stuff coming out. Does the town.
It depends.
Does the town allow people to bring stuff in and put it into the pit? I don't know.
I, I will.
It can't be junkyards.
It would depend on where I think it is put. If it, if the pit area and everything would have to be looked at, I don't know what you're alleging.
They got the five acre active pit area.
Right. So if they, if they are, let's say they place, I don't know, a stump out, way outside that area of that operation of the, the gravel pit, I don't think that's a problem, but, but I don't know what you're actually saying is happening. Are you saying somebody's bringing in what? Putting it where?
I don't go watch the pits. I don't know. All I know is I see trucks going the wrong direction to pits. So that's why I asked the question, but I have not been in any pits. I just see trucks on the road filled with wood debris.
Out or in?
Is stuff. It's all I say is stuff.
Stumps.
But if you, if you're going on to inspect, I, I don't know what you look at.
I've heard about that too.
Well, last time we inspected, we inspected the pit area, the area that is the operating pit.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But it's part of the inspection, I mean, it sees on it. Now, who enforces? Who enforces it? Does that enforce? Correct?
There's no, there's no guidance, there's no plan, right? There's no verification plan on file or anything for any of the pits, so.
The statute says that we inspect. You're right. I don't remember it saying, and it is, it's under state law that it has to be inspected. I have to look again to see who's supposed to enforce it if something doesn't, something's not happening.
Well, we can look at those regulations again. I already called reading them years ago. And so that you can't bring stuff in and bury it.
That's, that's dope.
If you're bringing stumps in and sifting them and cutting them up to work, to wood furnaces on a property, that's not a problem.
And that, and if that's happening, then that, that's not in the pit area.
Right, that's, that's why the furnace is.
Anything else? Comments from Mr. Clark? I don't have any comments tonight. Uh, our next meeting is September thirteenth. It is seven thirty-three. We are adjourned.